Okay, you realize the camera. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for September 30th.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Right.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
We have a quorum. We have the minutes from the September 23rd meeting. Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, it is my honor and privilege to move the minutes from September 23rd, 2019.
Well, since it's such an honor and a privilege, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, but apparently can't vote on it because he just left. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, if you could come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. I see no one coming to the podium, so at this time, we will move into the agenda items. The first thing we're going to go over in front of us is Draft Five of the Budget Priorities. And we, if you would pull those out, so that we can take a look at those. We have our first page, which handles some of the mission statements and the things that we had voted on as a council with the Financial Health Team about some of our priorities, and I don't think any of those have changed. Did anyone see any changes to that that they wanted to see in the first page? Other than the date, of course, which goes to 2020 and 2021. Seeing nothing. We go into the second page, that again is pretty boiler point of things that we're going over. And do we see anything, any changes or anything in that? Seeing nothing. We are in Page Three. And again, other than date changes, which, let me make sure we have in, let's go back to Page Two, and the whereas, the fiscal year, we have the change of the date there, which is the one, two, second whereas, the third, fourth, fourth whereas is a date change. And then we are now therefore be resolved, and there is a date change there. So we are on Number One of B, and we have a date change with that. Stop me if anybody sees something that they want to take a look at. Okay. Then, on Page Four, we have some additions. It's came out of Ways and Means, and so I'll go to Councilmember Spitzley to explain what these changes are and for anyone to question for further explanation.
Thank you, Madam President. So on Number Ten, hire a full-time or part-time individual. How's an LPD or Office of City Attorney who focuses on FOIA redactions? You know, as you know, we, both LPD and I'm assuming the Office of City Attorney, you know, first of all, we're under a timeline for FOIAs. We have a certain timeline that we have to respond to FOIAs. We can ask for an extension, but, you know, and I think that we've done a good job of reducing our FOIA backlog. However, listening to LPD and also in talking to folks, it's clear that the redaction of information of FOIAs takes an inordinate amount of time and resources. And so hiring a full-time or part-time person to focus on FOIA redactions, the Committee on Ways and Means thought that that would assist both offices in their efficiency in responding to FOIAs.
Are there any questions on this? I believe this also came up, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Jackson in Intergovernmental?
Yes, it did. I think it did because Councilmember Dunbar mentioned that you guys talked about it in Intergovernmental. Okay.
We're on Page Four, Number Ten.
I don't recall if it came up specifically, but I know that it's something people are interested in, so.
Okay. All right, great. So that's the one. Number Eleven?
Well, before you go on to Eleven, let's finish up with Ten. And to the City Attorney, can you also shed some light on this as well?
Well, there's no question, there's been an increase in requests under the Freedom of Information Act for what's known as the MVRs, the recorders in the cars and the body cams. And so we knew this was coming, but it just steadily increased. You have attorneys who perhaps can't get a court order in criminal cases, so they submit the requests through FOIA. And we get, it goes to the Police Department, and first the Police Department has to locate the recordings, and then you have to go through the redaction process where you may have minors involved, you may have personal information. And you could have, you know, a number of body cameras in one case, recordings. The more recent occurrence is, I'm understanding that the policy of the public, the new Public Defender's Office is now to request the videos on every case. And so I'm not, Mr. Jackson is there, maybe can speak to that, but that's our understanding. We heard that from the police. So that's got, it's an enormous amount. So the process is you have the FOIA section in the Police Department. The FOIA Coordinator is the City Attorney's Office. But the first entry point is the Police Department, and they have been understaffed in that area, just keeping people there. And then it comes to us, and we have to go through, we have redaction software. We've just ordered more so that others can redact. I had a occurrence here, we had a huge request from one of the newspapers that took us a long time to do one. I was going to redact myself, and I didn't have the redaction software. So we need to order redaction software for everybody in our office. I'm just giving you the whole.
Right, no, that's what I'm asking for. It was also my understanding that there was some talk about the fact that Ingham County had offered to pay a portion. Is that, could someone address that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Vice President Spatafor?
I don't want to speak. I wasn't at the Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting, but Councilmember Dunbar mentioned at Ways and Means that the county was mentioning that they needed some help on this as well, but most of the cases were city cases anyway, so they were looking at possibly some way to do a 50-50 or dual employer, however that might work, to get that position paid for out of both treasuries.
All right. Councilmember Garza?
I think you nailed it right there. That's about what it was. And then there was talk about where they would house the person, and Chief said that, you know, they'd be able to do that in-house. But I think you said it, summed it up.
Well, maybe what needs to be added to this and work in cooperation with Ingham County over funding. I'm suggesting that maybe what we need to add to this and work in cooperation with Ingham County over funding. Does that make?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that makes sense to me. I apologize. I was just bringing.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And if it has to go through, again, IGR, that's fine as well, too. I don't know what the process would be, but.
Well, these are the budget priorities to the mayor, and so part of that would be, again, you know, we're looking at this, as he's looking at it, we would want him to reach out to Ingham County. Councilmember Washington, then Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam President. To me, this makes sense, but I'm just curious, who's doing the redacting now?
It's being done by staff in the Police Department right now, but we also redact in our department for different videos, but.
It's not being done by our attorneys, so it's.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm just, yeah, I'm going to jump in real quick. I'm sorry. That's a problem.
Councilmember Spitzley?
So, okay. That's okay. So the issue here is that when we don't plead a FOIA in a certain amount of time, we're getting fined. So the fines are going to outweigh the cost of a person. If we don't have a person, we're going to pay the fines. So it would just seem like a logical thing. Now, I think personally that we should have a full-time hire of our own, since we are dealing with this in law and police. But also, when the commissioners brought it up in IGR, I mean, there also, many of the county cases are city cases that happen to be held over to the county. So that was the position that they were looking for possibly splitting the cost on another person. So they were saying that at least two people would be needed, one at the city and the, most of, I think, we agreed with law that, and LPD was there, the chief was there, that they're spending a lot of time on that. So if we could at least request the one person in this budget and then work with the county on splitting the cost for the circuit court cases, that would be what we were suggesting.
Councilmember Spitzley?
I apologize, Madam President. Thank you. Following up on what Councilmember Washington said, that's key, because we charge hourly rate of the, you know, lowest paid person that's, you know, that's doing the redaction. If we're paying, you know, attorney rate or a policeman's rate, you know, that goes back to the person who's requesting the FOIA. That's potentially a lot of money for that citizen who's trying to get the documents as well to, you know, and the purpose of FOIA is to have our citizens have an insight into government workings. But if you're making it cost prohibitive, that makes it a little difficult. And so if we can get somebody that we're not paying a city attorney salary or a policeman's salary, I think that that benefits everyone as well, potentially, yes.
City Attorney?
Can I just clarify something? The Coordinator, where all the requests are, is the City Attorney. It's under the law, that's the established one. The videos are redacted by the Police Department. We redact the documents.
Okay.
And that's the difference there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President, and Kathy, thank you, because you're absolutely correct. I work in the FOIA area for Department of Corrections, is in the area I work in. And the fines can be steep, even though you can get extensions, but you can't do that forever. But I think our attorneys have a whole lot more to do than redact documents. We have a full-time person that does redactions, and so this makes perfect sense.
Okay, so then that takes us, and other than that small change, that takes us to Eleven. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. This actually came from our internal auditor. And we talked about additional support for increases in capabilities and technology efficiencies for finance, treasury, and human resources. And we actually had talked about this a little bit with the City Treasurer when she attended one of our Ways and Means meetings. And so, you know, these three ERP migration, outside specialized consulting, possible addition of in-house staff as determined, is all geared towards, you know, making sure, one, that all of these departments talk to each other efficiently and work together. And again, the bottom line is to, you know, make it easier for our citizens, whether they're paying fines or doing whatever, and making it easier for our staff to conduct, you know, to do their jobs. But Mr. Brewer, if you'd like to add a little bit, I'd be more than happy to yield the floor.
I think Councilmember Spitzley covered most of the material. It's just basically about improving efficiencies, and these are just recommendations, obviously, because additional costs. But I provided some documents within the Ways and Means that if you get a transformational finance department, your audit time of, your audit time goes down, your in-closing goes down, and also, there's a lot more transparency. So that's the goal, is to get more efficiency and capabilities within those three core function. Everybody uses finance, HR, and then obviously treasury is a large revenue source, because obviously you want to make sure that you have good accounting on that.
Thank you. Sir, any, yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I'm sure that the city needs that, and it sounds great. But when I heard the description, it just reminded me of our new position, who's the CSO, whose job is to look at efficiencies when it comes to finance and all those other things. And I just wonder if it's good to just put it on there because we want it and we know it's something we need, or let the newly hired person whose job is to look at all that work in that area?
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I think to clarify, whatever that person finds, it's a software upgrade that we need. It's the actual technology. So whether it's technology that's been identified by the auditor or any other, any other person that's looking at it, our systems don't talk to each other, and it makes it really difficult to do anything in real time. So that's the only thing. It's not for, I don't think it's for people. I think it's more for the technology.
Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you. I got that. It's just that technology's also very expensive, and it sounds like whatever this may be, it could be the core of a lot. So that seems like that person who's going to link everything together would be definitely at least involved. And I'm sure by the end, that person would be.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President, and I agree. And I don't think that it's going to be done without input from the CSO. But, you know, it is something that we feel, I think, that folks in Ways and Means, listening to the internal auditor, feel that it is a priority, and so that we really need to have these different softwares, you know, talking to each other. The software might be expensive, but in the long term, I think it benefits us, and it results in a cost savings and efficiency savings. And so what I think, you know, for us to put it in our budget priorities is to kind of give a red flag to the administration that this is something important, that as that person looks at the priorities, this is a place where if you want to start somewhere, this is something that could really, you know, take a big chunk out of it and do good immediately.
Vice President Spatafor?
I also think when we're talking in committee, this is four or five months before the mayor releases his budget.
Right.
So this is demonstrating to the administration that the council supports those kinds of priorities if they come up in the discussion over the next few months, because we're sending these over this week. So giving them five months to kind of ruminate is important.
I think the other thing is, is having been on council for as long as I have, this has been an issue that's been out there for a number of years. And that's been the fact that what we have had over a period of time is each department would buy their own software for projects that they were working on without knowing whether it would talk to another department. And as we've seen, so many of the departments are intertwined, and because of that, we have the problems that we have today. I mean, if you look at Lansing Connect as a perfect example of not being able to talk to BSNA and, you know, not being able, you know, to understand duplications and a number of those things. I think that if, you know, as the other colleagues have said, if we're saying that this is important, it might not be these particular softwares. It could be the fact that, all right, as we start this process, this needs to be part of what we're asking for at all times. How does this integrate with the ones that we have? And if it can't, then is it something that we should buy now? Or should we wait until we can purchase something that does integrate with them? So I think those are things that we need to be looking at. So with that, I don't see any concerns with that, so we'll move on to the next sections. That's the end of Page Four. And that takes us into Page Five, and I don't see any changes that are in any of these. So that takes us into Page Six. And I don't see any changes that are in this section. This talks about code compliance. It talks about pursuing partnerships with other municipalities. And so that takes us into Page Seven. Seven deals with the rest of public safety issues that we've talked about. This goes from anywhere from staffing to community, or police, community relations, to regionalism, front-loading police officers, and then this takes us into Page Eight. Oh, Councilmember Hussein?
I just have a question slash comment. Page Seven, Number Twelve. The increased street sweeping, especially areas heavily traversed by bikes. I'm just, I'm curious if the language is clear enough. I would hope that, you know, common sense would rule the day, obviously, and we know that the dependability of the machinery, you know, is obviously going to be huge in whether or not we're able to actually, you know, get out there and street sweep. This is becoming more and more and more of an issue for residents. When we get out to neighborhood meetings, at our own constituent contact meetings, we have a number of people that are emailing us on a regular basis. My understanding is we used to street sweep at eight and four, so eight for the major roads and four for local. We're down to four and two. But my understanding is some of our issues have been exacerbated by the lack of dependability in terms of our street sweepers. So I guess I have a question for Nick. I believe we have, and I could be wrong, but I believe we have three. I believe that most of them are either not operational or have actually failed recent air quality tests and things of that nature. So my understanding is that we were leasing some equipment. At this point, I believe that that lease, some of that equipment is actually getting ready to expire. So I think there's an urgency here in terms of street sweeping. We, you know, obviously, we need our workers to be able to operate these street sweepers, and they need to be able to do that without causing any type of health hazard in themselves. But we also need to make sure, I mean, this is a flooding issue, this is an ice issue, this is incredibly important. So I don't know if we need to actually spell that out in this, that we would actually like to see some equipment purchased, or if this is substantial enough.
Mr. Tate, can you address, are you aware of whether the lease is up yet on the rental equipment? Have we, we do realize that there's an air quality issue that our employees have had, are being required to wear respirators when they're using our current equipment? Could you address any of that, please?
Madam President, I don't have that information at this time, but I can look into it as the meeting goes on, especially the leasing question.
Okay, make sure the green light is on when you.
Is this a bit better, Madam President?
A little bit, thank you. So maybe we need to look at how we can enhance this instead of just increasing street sweeping is to talk about the fact that we have the adequate equipment to do the job and that our employees' health is being considered with the equipment that we do have. Does that meet? Okay, does that meet everybody's? Do you have that? No, we know, but the thing is, it's our understanding that we do not have adequate equipment, our own adequate equipment. We are having to lease equipment. So we need to provide for our employees adequate equipment, whether that means leasing or purchasing to increase street sweeping and to make sure that the equipment, that our employees that are using the equipment are, what's a, are being, Jeremy, help me, for the air quality part of. Yes.
PEPA filters are working on their machines.
Yes. Councilmember Washington?
Madam President, I think this can be much simpler. We can put, ensure that we have the adequate safe equipment
Okay.
to increase street sweeping, especially areas heavily traversed by bikes.
And protect, and protecting our employees.
That's what I meant by safe.
Okay. Okay, that takes us on to Page Eight. Oh, yes, Mr. Tate?
Madam President, I'm told that the leases for the sweepers end this week, actually.
End this week?
Correct.
Are they going to extend those leases because we haven't even gotten into fall leaves? So.
Understood, Madam President. That would be my assumption, but I'll verify that.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley?
Well, I, that's my question. Are they going to be renewed? I hope they are, and so.
Because we don't have the equipment. I think we have one that's working.
So if we're, so since we're leasing them or we're getting ready to renew the leases or whatever, I think this is, it's a good time to, you know, bring them up to, you know, and let them know about these concerns that we have about the, making sure that they have the proper equipment for health and safety purposes.
Vice President Spatafor?
I don't know if y'all recall, when Director Kilpatrick was here for a budget presentation, we talked a lot about equipment and whatnot, and he said they were going to be piloting new types, whether they were front-mounted for trucks and things like that. He mentioned this a couple of times in the Public Service Committee as well. So I don't know where he is on that, but I know that they're not not thinking about it. They mentioned it a couple of times to us.
Well, I think the thing is, is, you know, part of it was bringing in to determine which equipment that they might purchase. But are we, do we have the funds available now to purchase them, and what is the timeline? Are they something that's similar to our fire equipment that you've got to half-build before we have it or what? We don't want to end up being this fall without street sweeping equipment. Okay, that takes us to Page Eight. And, yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I just have a modification to the Sustainability Coordinator. That's on Page Eight. E, basically. It reads currently, designate funding for a city sustainability coordinator to implement the deliverables, findings, and recommended steps for the Lansing Climate Action Project. I would like to add, at the end of that, and/or general sustainability efforts, including but not limited to combating Lansing's carbon footprint and aligning with the Paris Accord. The reason for that is because.
Is your mic on, sir?
Yes.
Okay, can you get a little closer?
Yes. So the reason for this addition is because I don't want to hinge a sustainability coordinator on contingent, basically, with developing a climate action plan for the reason because in IGR, where we're working on that, we're working with a contracted person who's basically contracted to research, gather data, and develop a climate action plan. contracted to research, gather data, and develop a climate action plan. And as a chairperson, a layperson, I would not want to just make any climate action plan without using the data that's obtained, nor would I want to do something that's not effective for the overall goal. So basically, the delays with this contract that we all voted to give the 13,000 on is kind of disheartening for the reason because they haven't got past the first steps of data gathering. We had to extend it from October 1st deadline, which is to, which is tomorrow, to the end of the year, which I still don't think will be enough time. And it's only the end of the year because the committees could change. And the delays I hear are just because of a hard time for her, Ann, who's the contractor, to work with the city and the administration and getting all the information and all the data from the various departments, really because it's a lot of data and it's a lot of asking and it takes people's time to look at it. So from my understanding, and Nick, you can correct me if you know, the administration designated a person to help with that instead of Ann reaching out to a whole bunch of different people she's not, doesn't necessarily know. But it's still in the beginning stages and I would not want to see us miss opportunity just because there's no climate action plan.
Okay.
And I can, if I can add a few more things. I think that even without a climate action plan, this position will be very important because there's going to either be mandates in the future, the near future, or there's going to be incentives and grants available to start building the infrastructure of reducing carbon footprint. And I hate to say it, but a Green New Deal. I really hate to say it because I know that scares a lot of people. But there's a lot that has to be done and it's up to counties, states, and municipalities to do it. And there will be incentives in the future that Lansing will have to capitalize on so that we can make it happen too. So that's why I'm adding that additional language.
Okay, just so that everyone knows, we're on page E, eight, but it was under number E that Councilmember Jackson is speaking to. And can you please restate the language that you would like to have added?
Okay, so added and/or general sustainability efforts, including but not limited to combating or reducing Lansing's carbon footprint and align with the Paris Accord.
Does anyone have a problem with that? Councilmember Washington.
I just prefer reducing over combating.
The word pardon?
That's a fair, fair substitute. And it could be Paris Accord, a Paris Agreement, or Paris Goals.
Yeah, I think it should be the Paris Accord. Okay. So is that agreed on? All right, let's go back up. We have, on page eight, we have number 14 that was added. And this is adding the ADA accessible amendments, which are Attachment A. So that is added in there. We agreed on that at the last meeting. And then under D, Councilmember Spatafor, are you fine with that language that has to do with the corridor facade grants? Okay, so everyone agreed with that? Okay, that takes us then into the General Services. And if we remember, these were recommendations that came from the Board of Public Service. And these are their recommendations that they asked be added in there. And then you have the Attachment A that's, that's there after that. Is there anything else on this document? Going, going, gone. Okay, with that, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the 2019-20 budget priorities.
2021.
2020, 2021 budget priorities, excuse me.
We have a motion on that. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. That will be on the agenda for this evening for passage and will be coming out of committee of a hole. So the next item that we have on our agenda is comments to DeWitt Township on the farmland and open space preservation program application for us to review. We are not asked to do a resolution and support, but they're asking if we have any comments on this. I'm sure that most of you are aware of the farmland and open space preservation program where different municipalities are able to purchase land to keep it from being developed and to be used either as open space or as farmland. And the DeWitt Charter Township is making a purchase of that. If you look in your document, you will see the area that they're looking at. I'm, I'm assuming because we're the next proximity to them as a municipality, that that's why we're able to comment on this. But, but again, we're not paying for it. We're not part of it. But if there's any objections, this is where we would send a letter to them at this time. Is there, yes, Councilmember Jackson.
So there's a little concern that there's no space for, for example, wind energy turbines or solar. And the other concern is that the places like rural areas, farmland, if it's not zoned for it, or if there's objection, then there's still nowhere to put it. And we're going to have to work collaboratively with neighbors, urban, farmland, rural, all that to basically align with the Paris Agreement as a country and as a region and as a city and all that. So I wonder if, and I, maybe you guys would be open to it, if we maybe just express a concern that's kind of relating to that, that if this is going to bar future development of wind turbines or whatever, that we should just consider how much we limit it for the reason that we're going to need this space to basically reduce our footprint and work on all the goals collectively. It's, it's what I would want to see in there. I mean, we're not saying yes or no, but just to at least start thinking of that. So at least the leader's there or whoever looks at it can keep in mind that this is a real thing.
Vice President Spatafor.
I, I kind of agree with what you're saying, Councilmember Jackson. But I will note that the governor in June changed the law or changed the interpretation or the enforcement of the law under the, it's the Open Space Preservation Act or whatever it's called, to allow for solar energy to be on these parcels of land. So I don't know that there's anything we need to do about that. I mean, objecting to it might be worse than staying silent.
Councilmember Washington, then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Beyond the solar and wind energy thing, I am very much in favor of this because we have to find a way to stop the urban sprawl. If you're concerned about the environment, you have to be concerned about urban sprawl. And the open space and preservation program allows for the stoppage of some of that.
Councilmember Jackson.
Sure, and I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we reject or go against it, but just to note that we would encourage this space to be considered a use in space like it. And if it doesn't include wind, then maybe we can encourage that everybody support wind as well on there.
I would, um, I would ask the members that sit on Tri-County on Planning, I would assume that this came before Tri-County on Planning. Was there anything that came, you, you don't?
I don't recall this, no.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I just, actually, that's what made me think of this because when I mentioned to Tri-County a while ago about what are our plans for adaptation and sustainability, et cetera, et cetera, they all looked around like, what do you mean? What do you mean? And then one of the members from Clinton County came to me afterward and said, don't even think about using some of that land for wind. We're already going to do mining or something there and it's off limits. The people don't want it, it's off limits. So I don't know what's going to happen, but just know that Clinton County is off limits. And that was just an informal conversation. It wasn't on the record or anything. But it's just, that mindset made me think about this as this came up. And it happens to be in Clinton County also, but he was referencing a particular area in Clinton County that's off limits. So I don't want to see a lot of other places go off limits or be harder to become, to come on limits when it matters.
And, and I just noticed when I was looking at this, I believe this last page that's on there has nothing to do with their request. This, this has to, I, I believe comes from the parks information that we had as part of the ADA accessibility that somehow got copied onto that. So, Councilmember Dunbar.
Well, that explains my first question. Yeah.
Well, I first look at it, I'm thinking, did parks make a recommendation? And then I.
Didn't make any sense. So Councilmember Jackson, are you assuming because of the interaction that you had with a commissioner, that, that they would also have this? Because I'm not, did I miss something? Does it say it's prohibited on this parcel in this purchase? Or are you assuming because of your conversation that it would be? And that you would like us to say, okay, we would like this to be considered for? I mean, since it's adjacent to us, that we open that up for solar or whatever?
Sure. The only information I have is whether it's prohibited or not is from Councilman Spatafor, who just said that the governor changed a few months ago where solar is acceptable. And I'm just asking as a body that we, we, all we can do is gave, basically send him a note that says what we think. And in that note, we say, please consider not limiting the use or in development of renewable energy. I'm also going by what the BWL, I think it's Dick Peffley said about an ongoing litigation matter out in Isabella County or wherever it is, where they are having trouble acquiring the land for their proposed wind energy farm and that they might not be able to do it now because of that. So it's just kind of an overall ideology that could slow us down when we do have the ability to move forward. So our little note might just be a little tickler that urban areas, we're going to have to work together. And the rural areas are going to see their crops diminished too. So it's going to be a win-win. But either way, we just need to let them know that we need to work together and that that area should be considered for it.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Dunbar, and then Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think my limited experience with wind farms up here, I think that there has been a lot of discussion in Clinton County. I don't know if they're one of the counties that went out and did prohibitions. I know that there are a lot of wind farms up along 27 as you go up north. But I, I think one of the things, I don't necessarily disagree with the thought. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, from one local government suggesting to another local government how to conduct their business and land use, or whether or not there's, there's already something within the county that's prohibiting X, Y, and Z. And so I'm always concerned about that. And I, I know that there are some wind farms as you go up 27, but, and I, and I remember Dick Peffley saying that because they had some property, I think it was in the thumb area, that they were trying to do a wind farm and because of residents and the outcry in the community, that fell through. And so I, I know that there is a, a need. I also know that there are a lot of wind farms that are going on up north. I was surprised when I just drove up there earlier this year how many, how it's grown. But it would concern me if, if we're trying to tell another local government how to conduct their business. But you're saying it's just a suggestion, so.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Vice President Spatafor.
I would say that this is no different than East Lansing City Councilmembers coming to our public hearing last week saying what to do about red cedar. I mean, I think that, that, that's part of intergovernmental relations is like, if there is something adjacent particularly to your municipality that is going to have an impact on your citizens, then, then it's totally within our purview to ask. Now, I, obviously, if, if they're not into the wind turbines, which that's fine, this is a sizable chunk of property and we could recommend that they consider it for solar. I mean, it would be local, it's in the area, border water and light has easy access, we all use the power. I, I have no problem with, you know, it's not telling them what to do, but saying that, you know, given, and if you wanted to, I don't know, draft it, I don't, I don't have a problem with.
Vice President Spatafor. No. We have, this was sent to us on September 13th. We have 30 days to reply to this. We have a committee of a whole meeting on the 7th and a council meeting on the 14th. So we do have time and a letter would not require a vote of council. It would just be a consensus of council. So what we could do is look at drafting something and have it as a final item on our committee of a whole on the 7th so that we could get it out in time to make the deadline to be able to say something. So if there are councilmembers that have some ideas of things that they would like said, if they would get that information to share, then we could look at something. I think it's important to make sure that we are suggesting, not dictating. We remember that those things can come back and, and bite us as well when another municipality decides something that we're doing that they might not like, you know, and, and come back and, and do those things. But because this is adjacent and is asking for comments, I think a comment is what we're giving them. So I, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. Is everyone good with that? Okay. So we'll have that. Next, we have Vice President Spatafor. We are going to have a motion for closed session. Once we have that motion to go into closed session, we are waiting for the mayor to come. So we might not be starting immediately as we go in there. So with that, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, pursuant to MCL 15.268-H of the Mission, of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state statute, specifically to discuss a written legal opinion from the city attorney provided under attorney-client privilege and which is also exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor? Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Dunbar?
Okay. For the listening audience, we are going into closed session. When we come out of that, we will be coming back out and then re-adjourning to go into a council meeting. Thank you.
They're not like questions to do with like, except for I was gonna ask them if their main goal is their voting priorities. Like, if you could like put these words, like, I have like, I saw like the draft, and I'm like, twelve, eleven. But I just wanna know like, this, that, something else that goes to me. But then others that I just have like, personal questions, like, people feel, so...
What is it?
The next one is...
Yeah, they can answer, well, I mean, it's their choice. Only thing you would really, you can't really ask them, so what they're talking about right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good, it could, they're not, they're gonna say, I can't say anything. They're not, they're not.
I'm just gonna go back.
They would, they would get in trouble if they told you.
Yeah, safety, and I was thinking that I personally, but I do not go through these. You can find your... We never have to leave all of them.
But no, that's, that's why...
Well, the central point, the water stream, we have been greatly thinking about. Yeah, that's the issue, we've had to do that the whole way through, but it's a great thing. I wish I... So, to... So, did I make it? Wow, that's nice. Yeah, better than my... I used to like, uh, the boys.
So, where is it?
Um, special ceremony? Um, I'm gonna show you college, Mike.
Well, that's not beloved.
I don't think it's elegant, but it's probably out for the, I mean, city councils, we can get the balance really well. The, uh, the...
I have worked with the, but I didn't...
Oh, yeah, I, I assume that they'll put one of them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is, are they, are they gonna come back? To listen to open conversations? Uh, I'm not sure about, is, uh, side up with a, like, a tree dash? Well, I need to ask somebody. Yeah, we're here, lady. Yeah, I will. Are you a reporter?
I am. I don't keep my, my other stand away, but she often has a opinion on the budget priorities. She's looking for people to quote.
Hi, I'm Connie Moore. I'm a reporter for Spartan Newsroom. I was wondering if I could ask some... And follow up with that. Okay, so... Because I see that the city has declined in its service to its residents in terms of, uh, the infrastructures, public services, safety issues, police and fire. Uh, we are running very understaffed on police and also understaffed on fire. It's wrecking havoc with citizens' safety.
And what is the most important priority?
I think if you don't have a safe city, you don't have a good city. So I think safety, public safety, police and fire first. Go ahead. I haven't heard of Spartan.
The Spartan Newsroom?
Is it different than the State News?
Um, they, I mean, it's honestly, it's kind of like the same thing. I think State News is more like, you know, literally, you speak for...
Uh huh.
Spartan News is like online, like, it's like the...
Okay. Okay.
Hey, how are you?
This is a double check. Loretta's Standaway, L O R E, T T A, S T A, N A W P, W A T. And what is your... I'm in a cell phone. S O S, U O P, N A D. My board seven, six, four, eight. I, I got my back. Strongly conservative.
And would it be okay if I were to call up the... Sure, if I should, be a text or email?
Yes. Okay, I was maybe...
Which meeting are you?
For the next one. Claire, how almost works, did anyone explain to you?
Yeah, wait, cause it gets confusing to me as a whole. Well, because those people think they're for the, to be the whole meetings, which hasn't yet, which is not scheduled to start, so I make sure I'm here to... Correct. Yeah, so that's to be the whole. So, yeah, so that's why we, we're two guys about meetings, to be the whole. And so, people will sign in for the custody when they met the meeting, to be the whole. We gotta hold things back a little bit. Yep, for speakers. You want a speaker? Okay? Just for speaker, not for attending.
So, signing sheet here, or... Which, um, you signed in on issue, signed in on the...
I think it was signed in earlier, at least I didn't...
I didn't see the names, I can't... And there's usually an agenda here, and documents here. And for the city council meeting, the agenda is here. And the financial sheet is here. This is for anything on city government, and this is on the latest slate. So this one comes first, and this is at the end of the...
Correct. Yeah. I'm sure you will work for the...
Supporting documents is...
Yes. You have the packet ready?
That's how it works. Thank you, this one, my last.
You with that as too?
Yes, I am. Spartan Newsroom?
Excuse me. Is there going to be an open session for conversation to speak to the council or not today?
There will be. I, I understand that. Thank you.
He did it.
Yes.
You have the, the copy of the order? Uh, so the one with the little red at the top, this is the marijuana, that's the budget. The other document.
So, some of the...
So... Probably to change the figures. Align right rate.
We never do work on that.
Should we reach for it? Coordination with all two houses. Are you guys, uh, organizing it? Organizing one?
We are organizing.
Be able to, uh, try, try, and also be able to... Oh, they will. That's what my concern is.
Sorry to bother you. Something to that, for the... We have like these files. Everyone.
Well, that's something, that's again individual, somebody to, for, for giver. I think individual gets well...
That's our weird question.
Yeah, so...
You know, to see, um, anyone to come up to the, there was a section at the end of the... There's one who's supposed to talk about council business at the mic, and then has to...
Well, um, we have a webpage, like we're talking, there's a webpage, there's marijuana. Um, to the licensing base for our offers. So you can check, you're certain, you know, the status. All the applicants, you can see if there are just listed, yes. I mean, there's that hundreds, it depends, that's what...
Well, also it's got a background, so it's just, you give your opinion.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, they can stack them all, so they could be able to...
So, clearing, uh...
Like, people would call in. Yeah, something like that, yeah, yeah, those classes. Yeah, still a mess.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend, I was trying to tell them.
So there's a license.
I was thinking, why, I have some of both, and I think I'm gonna read it on...
I don't know, probably.
So if you want to just like...
I guess they kind of stuff it out.
I don't have any question, I, I can't even cover this next one. Oh, okay, so it's, it's gonna be a long... So you might just...
Well, yeah, I mean, you're gonna get all the different sign offs and...
There's a video.
I think once it kind of gets more so, and to uh, clear, a lot of, clear...
Yeah, I would recommend that.
More streamlined, but right now it's a lot, a lot of navigating, a lot of lawyers.
After this one, yeah.
So tonight they are revising, revising, like how it's dealt with medical, but basically something else.
So do.
Recognition, but also other licensing type, like, like, special player microbrewery. Type where X number of plants, and you can grow, process, and sell out of a small operation, and they'll be four of them in the cities, like... Yeah, once they pass it, will need a few more days to kind of break it down into, like, applications, people can, people will be completing and things like that. Uh, but also, uh, you know, the packet has some summary that logs together of what it changes and the new ordinance, and they have a summary on that. Well, that's the whole, I mean, that's the whole ordinance. But what they did for the public hearing is absolutely ordinance, um, major changes. But if they approve the ordinance, these are changes from the current operation. So, and this is a memo that I'll put out before they have... Uh, I mean, that's why you want to go to the website to see exactly where we are at this point, because who has state approval, we conditionally approve, which ones got their state approval? And did they get the certificate of occupancy, and they can operate? I think we're like here, so I don't know if I had that. There are some needs changed. Well, that should change if you're doing recreational medical... But if you're, but if you're doing some other type of use, or maybe you... Not the building safety. So you still have to do, you have to follow what we, our partner has to clean up. But you still gotta get your certificate of occupancy and all that, and the safety. In addition, so that has to change.
We just stayed put, we, we started in the... We just stayed there and talked about the other stocks.
Yeah, and that's, and that's not even, and that's, that's a building safety review.
We're gonna put the flyer and the map and the notes on Facebook.
And they have, providing fire code, and how that girl's got to follow. So there, so there, that's really outside the licensing front of it, that's... So that's still there. So the run is standard, and that makes sense.
And the jungle is between the football games and the stadium.
At nine o'clock, uh, is it nine o'clock, now start the race?
The race starts, it tends to be, is there...
Yeah, it, it's like a...
Is there an...
Why don't you go have that, you'll build first. So, so, before, I had it marked down, but, um...
Okay.
I thought it was on the, the last game.
Right, right, right.
If I can be there, I'll be there to help with traffic.
We started.
Right. Okay. And the agendas over here, sir? Yeah, he has on the board, he has today, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, that's. A lot of changes, yeah. Oh, okay, those all separate after, yeah, it's the whole, yeah, it's a whole different legal framework now. Yeah, yeah, and so, and, oh, so they, no. Well, it's just, it's clear, we have clear state regulations, we have clear city regulations. We've been sued seventeen times within all our lawsuits, with this marijuana regulating process that we've gone through the last two years. Also. Whenever you look at lawsuits, I don't thought. Right, yeah, I'm not.
Sure, yeah. Yep, yep, that's definitely clear. Uh, he'll be here shortly. I expect him here, so if not, I'll be up there covering for him.
He should be here then.
But, uh, yeah, yeah, questions within.
Um, we can't get into what people that, who said, but process, that's in that. That was the whole, yeah, the whole fact or the law, the lawsuit settlement. I don't know, I can't remember if it's still there already. At some point it was going to end, but I don't think that's true. Yeah, I barely try to know my little part, but I don't know the industry, I don't. Um, well, I would, uh, I mean.
I'll give us.
Yeah, I think, hey, schedule a time, just give a call or email on that, but also, um, we have two licensing. About Washington location. Who, uh, is very up on all of the regulation part and that. Could be for good reason. Our whole deal, the old DASHO garden, it's by Washington. We got the voluntary. If you go south of Washington, you have Washington part. The old DASHO garden. Yeah, we're in that building, it's like, um, we do mostly white. The mayor wanted to build space, who's, her licensing range, that area, well, yeah, two people out there.
It's hard.
Their other, yeah, it's not quite, I don't. Although, uh, they get further down into. Well, I would say, you know, recall or, and then we'll just take our time and meet over there with the agenda. Well. They've read all. They charge.
Okay, yes. Yes, it is.
So that's, um, the.
Well, that's just proper, okay? I could get, I could get the tire. Oh, we are, take care. I saw your picture on the page. Okay, yeah, I have the E three. I know she loves, I have to ask her why, I mean, I know what she's saying, but they're all ones instead.
Hey, listen to you.
I've heard a couple of different things, I don't know that any of them are accurate, so I'm happy to repeat.
She had the deal with her bosses.
Yeah, that's on me there, uh, the state.
Yeah, this is for. They tried, three weeks suspension. Mary. Mary. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. Oh, so that was, uh. Sure, yeah, yeah. Available on the web. Also, this is one that most incredible, so what about change, uh, are changes? There's nothing wrong about either making the change in general, uh. We don't have any regulation. It'll be back nowadays, we're heading to be open now. So they're not regulated. I can't speak for the future, but. Markets. Yeah. You didn't know.
That's why I keep telling them they need to put research there.
We have, uh.
There is a. Yep, so we should be able to much.
I mean, we could strike.
We forgot, yeah, we thought phase two.
That'll be interesting.
I raised it. So hopefully, they may.
A lot of other.
Myself here is a violation.
He stopped him a lot.
And he stopped by one of them.
Yeah.
No, I think, and Whitmore is, that's your favorite. But I can only believe somebody ever took. Yeah.
The middle of the day.
They would most of them, they'd went out there, stand in front of a tree as well. So would, uh, Ted, what was his name? Ted's.
We had a. Yeah, I, but I'm trying to. Yeah.
Well, I believe Derek, he really. Or, um. I don't like the. Really, actually. Carol, Carol, yeah, Carol.
We're talking about, uh, something that they see. Something that they see. Oh, maybe it's on the agenda.
Marijuana.
I think it's better for us.
I don't know. The rent is.
If he wants to, basically say, you know, that's something to pass it, we understand. Sometimes they will, once they come across a person, say, that's, you know, that's sort of.
The agenda? Agenda, right there, the, and there.
Have you ready to play try sides? Try taking.
Um, one of our students, from.
This is budget policy.
How will we be?
The agenda center of.
Right.
The search of. Yeah. Sure.
So, and he just got. Last week with the, uh. So, he's gonna try and be here, but he will be.
Be here.
How you doing, Chris?
Hey, how you doing?
I'll be my son's. He was thirty years old. My dad. Sir, pardon, let's see. Want you. Remember Woodford? I was at the Capitol. Signed a. Buy the shirt, besides bought the was.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. How you doing? Too bad the last place didn't notice. He got on a job. So. You don't know what's happening?
I'm not loud.
But that's. Let me call, Chris, that's his phone number.
Hey, Chris, do you know anything about, uh, variance hearing on marijuana application on nineteen eighty eight Michigan?
I don't.
I think you got the notices for Con Street. It's like something about.
I know we sent notices to the ones, we found that we're looking five hundred and forty of each other. Instead of if they wanted to apply for variance, they could.
Yeah, it was like there's three, three locations, they're kind of the same block, none of them are operational. So. Like nineteen oh eight, Michigan, nineteen ten, eighteen, twenty five, which is category. Capital. That one's like, abandoned dispensary. This one was like, crazy, another one's bitchin' five hundred and fifty two. I don't know if they wanted to consolidate their application.
I don't know if they wanted to consolidate their application, I was confused by it.
Well, the ordinance, the current.
A lot of social.
Well, he didn't approve anybody with his.
Well, anyone. Yeah. Because they're ordinance.
Like that, I wanted, Oregon, Michigan, seemed to be a place to park their cars. But there's like, well, that's the only one that looks like dispensary from the outside, the other two were just, one's a liquor store that disposed, and the other one's an office. They're all just facing, they're baking businesses. I don't know, bro, tell the story, but I don't know, we just got noticed that because it's across the street, that is. It's me, like, I need to check the check city, you know, this could happen at our front door. Yeah, there was some hearing, this was like, yeah. More of a seal, when you put a seal or something. Yeah, yeah, it's only a field. So I don't know if, I need to check the adjusted, see what they have on the document.
Yeah.
That it helps yourself, and I believe there are people who necessarily help you, but I think there are concerns with it. But what happens is, a lot of people don't, you see, are, get very tired walking around, saying, that is, somebody that smells from here to kingdom of hell, forget. They get contact, they have asthma, and it makes them have an asthma attack, you know, I can't tell you how many times, like, then it rises like a, 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 forever, and you have to walk through a closet, pass, to get to where you're going. And if you're out of, you know, that's, you know, it's offensive going walking. If there was a way to detain, which is the worst, so it didn't leave the perimeter person, it's actually, it's probably a lot more excessive. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm looking for, um, speed of four.
Oh, they're in full session right now, for getting the hole, and then they'll come back, they'll shut you the hole.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'll pray for you. I'll pray for you.
Appreciate it. Well, yeah, I suppose the question is, I wonder. And, uh, we also need to have a K H. All right.
Sure.
Yeah, I got a, I got a. In London.
Call back to order the committee of a whole, and we are now resign, uh, resign, we are now adjourned, and that we will commence in, uh, five minutes, thank you.